Could keep. If everyone could keep themselves muted unless they are the applicant who is speaking or on the board and also keep your cameras off. That will help us with bandwidth. I have just learned from Elizabeth. So that's good. When we go ahead and if open to public comment, if you want to comment, you can either use the raise hand function or you can use star nine to raise your hand if you were on the phone and then star six to mute and unmute yourself. Um, let me first say hello, Mr. Swaim. Nice to see you. Our new associate member was sworn in this morning.
How do you do? Good to see you again.
Good to see you too. We're happy to have you join us.
Thank you.
But note that you are not participating tonight. Since you are very new and and have not had a chance to review everything. So we will be excited to have you participate next month. With that, let me take a roll call vote and see who's here. Mr. Kindermans.
I'm here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Faya.
Here.
And Ms. Akers Moore here. And with that, let us get moving along our 7:00 PM Simes Development and Permitting. Applicant has requested a continuance without discussion to July 8th. I assume seven, 7 o'clock. Heather.
It's going to be 7:20.
Oh, 7:20. Okay.
Christmas.
Yeah. 7:20. So if I could.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Ms. Akers Moore. I. Great. Wow, it's 7:04 by itself. 30 seconds. And then we're going to move on. Too many lawyers on this call, not to be by the book. Sorry. Heather, you're letting people in and I don't need to do anything, right? Okay.
You want to be co-host, Elizabeth, so you can see?
Um, sure, if you want. Um, great. Well, it is 7:05. So let us go ahead with the Conquer Country Club. Greg, are you presenting?
Um, I am presenting for the Conquer Country Club. Mark Bobrowski, my office is in Damon Mill. Good evening, board members. Nice to see you again.
Good evening.
This evening, we'd like to give you an update on the paperwork that's been submitted. That'll be done by Paul Kirchner. Peter Newton will give you a hydro geo update. And then Elizabeth Morris will update you on landscaping related issues. So without further ado, I'd ask Paul Kirchner to do the original or the initial work here.
Yep. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. I misplaced my headphones. So I've been freaking out here for five minutes.
You're good.
Okay, good. Um, so for the record, my name is Paul Kirchner from Stamske McNary where the engineers and surveyors for this project. We did submit some documentation a few weeks ago. First and foremost, we submitted a narrative in order to try to paint a more comprehensive picture of this project that stated May 12. Planting plan was also submitted that Lili will go into that stated May 17. Peter Newton prepared a well management plan. That's what I called it in this letter that I submitted. It's really more of a monitoring well management plan. So he will discuss that in further detail. We did provide an aerial sketch to show the proposed pond and how it compares to the surrounding properties, where it is in relation to the abutting houses. And there's also a couple of aerial photographs that were provided at the suggestion of Elizabeth Hughes to to show what the site looks like today. I can get into the narrative a little bit. I'm sure we're all familiar with it at this point, or at least some of us. But we really wanted to give a better explanation or a more comprehensive explanation, I should say, of what this is. So I won't take you through the entire thing. But we did provide some background information on 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 why the club is looking to do this, which we have already discussed pretty extensively in the past. But just to get it in writing, I think that was valuable. Essentially, right now, we're relying on the wells to provide flows instantaneously. We want to take a slower sip, as we've mentioned in the past. So when we, when the club was approaching this, the irrigation designer really told them you need some sort of storage reservoir or you need to drill another well if you're going to have an adequate water supply going forward to properly irrigate the course. Since a well, they didn't want to pursue a well, so the storage reservoir was the option that elected to pursue. For a storage reservoir, we can either go above or sorry, underground or surface storage reservoir. As you know, we we have submitted plans for surface reservoir. There is a difference in volume required for these these two options. Underground can be a little bit smaller because essentially you can you can suck it dry. Whereas with the surface pond, you can't really do that because for one, things can get into the pond. So you don't want to bring it down to its absolute minimum because then you're going to end up in taking sediment or whatever else may have run into the pond. Additionally, it doesn't look very good if you have a totally empty pond. So you want to have some water in there at all times, just so that it's more aesthetically pleasing. And that's why you see the difference between requirement of 1.2 million gallons for underground storage versus 3 million gallons for a surface water storage reservoir. So when the club approached this, there's a few criteria they looked at. They wanted to stay out of resource areas. Try to be 100 feet from any property lines. The club did not want to impact the character of the course. Since it is a historic course, Greg and Peter were coaching to know more about that than I. So they can go into that if you'd like to hear more about that. And then we also wanted to capture some stormwater runoff. That is another benefit of doing a surface water, surface reservoir. It can collect rain and then they don't need to pump as much water out of the ground. Especially during the winter months, you know, when the the course isn't active, connecting, collecting snow melt is a goes a long way just to try to minimize the amount of water they're pumping from the ground. So we did look at five different sites, which I outlined, you know, the the essentially the pros and cons of each of these sites. Tried to give them names to make them easy to identify if we want to reference them at any point. North, we have discussed these alternatives in the past, but briefly, the Northwest Pond, there's an existing depression, which is very nice. It would make it most likely a bit easier to construct, but it is very close to Old Marlborough Road. It's currently wooded right now, but due to its proximity to Old Marlborough Road, that potential solution was abandoned fairly early on. The landscape waste pond, I think we discussed that in the past. That's more in the middle of the course, fairly close to our proposed pond site. But the, you know, it has a potential to collect stormwater runoff, but it's near a wetland. It's where they currently dump their landscape waste from the course. So while they, for one, they have to find a new spot to dump that material going forward, but also in order to build this pond, you'd need to remove a lot of material just to get down to native soil to then fill it back in because you can't put this on top of organic material because it will break down over time. Middle Pond, very close to our proposed pond location. It's a nice spot. It would be primarily cut, but it's in the middle of the core. So it's really going to change the character. It does have some potential to collect stormwater runoff, which is what we're aiming for here. However, it's not a large subcatchment area, so it really doesn't do as much as we we would like. But really, the primary reason that we did not continue to pursue that alternative was that it's located in the middle of the course and it would really change the character of the course. Underground storage tank can't collect stormwater runoff. It's nice because it's easier to hide because you put it underground. But you need to find a relatively flat area to build that. I can expand on that more if you want. And then we have our proposed pond site, which we're all familiar with. And well, that's what we're talking about tonight. So I won't beat that to death. Again, we wanted to stay out of resource areas, which is why we have pursued this proposed pond location. The encroachment into the riverfront area has been resolved, as you know. So we really are outside of the buffer zone associated with wetlands and riverfront area associated with Doug and Brooke. Well, operation and that's really going to be what Peter Newton discusses. So I won't go too far into that. I think Peter Pochio can talk about the well operation or I'm sorry, the pond operation and maintenance. Neighborhood impact. Lili has prepared a planting plan in order to help screen the pond that she can dive deeper into. I think one thing I would like to note about this pond is right now, if I haven't personally been to the abutting properties. However, I have been told that this work area is visible, which I understand. I would like to note, though, that if this pond is built and the plantings are planted, the pond is going to be green. So right now, you know, it's bare soil, which is going to be much more visible. Once things have grown in, it's going to be green. It's going to look a lot more natural. I just want to get that on the record. And then the last section I had besides this quick summary that I provided is the impact to the town. That's really related to Peter Newton's monitoring well plan that he's provided. So I think it's more appropriate for him to discuss that. But unless you have any questions about what I have just gone over, I know it was pretty quick. I'm trying to run through here, but please feel free to ask any questions. Otherwise, I'll hand it back to.
I think there probably are a whole bunch of questions, but I think it makes sense to have you run through your whole presentation with your different team members and then we can we can circle back.
Thank you.
All right, I guess I'll just pick right up. Wasn't sure if I was going to be introduced by Mark or not, but my name is Peter Newton. I'm a hydrogeologist with Bristol Engineering Advisors. Was brought aboard at the suggestion of Alan Cathcart at Conquer Public Works. The suggestion of the ZBA. One of the things that we were tasked with looking into is the benefit to the town of this pond, if there is any. But one thing that this pond enables the course to do is to decouple irrigation from well operations. So the the fact that the well that the course needs to be irrigated at certain periods of time and and that, you know, I'm not an irrigation expert, but from what I understand, a higher rate distributed more locally, but for shorter periods of time is ideal, but the existing wells are limited in capacity. There's just so much water you can pull out of a well. So the wells were forced to run longer, encroaching into the daytime hours. They and becoming, they were less sophisticated in terms of their operations with moisture sensors and and weather prediction than the the system that's proposed is going to be. The decoupling allows the the Country Club to operate the wells as needed to to refill, but it also also allows them to not run the wells and still irrigate. So the, you know, the what you know, what that can do is in periods of dry weather or when we have communications with the water and sewer department that they have concerns about the the capacity of the Deaconess Wells to meet public water supply. The Country, the Country Club can can dial back its its withdrawal, its refilling for the to the irrigation pond. So to to codify that and to some degree, we prepared a well management plan, which discusses how the wells operation will be reduced during periods of Massachusetts declared drought stages. So as the drought severity index increases, well, operations will will decrease up to the point where if the state declares an emergency drought, a drought emergency in the in your region. We've agreed that we would be meeting, we would, we would have an engaged conversation with Water and Sewer about how the status of the of the Deaconess Wells are. Whether they're comfortable with the with the with operation of the wells to to refill the the basin. Or, you know, how we can manage it. Part of that is going to be developed, is going to be, you know, the the data is going to be provided. The well pumping data will be provided on in monthly reports so that the Water and Sewer Department can review it. The other thing that that Paul mentioned is we met with Water and Sewer onsite and identified a location for a monitoring well that is located strategically between the Country Club's irrigation wells and the Deaconess Wells. The purpose of that monitoring well, which doesn't exist yet, but is going is is proposed because we wanted the, we wanted the right location. There is a monitoring well on site, but neither the club nor John Rogers, Water and Sewer, we all agree that that was probably not the ideal location for the monitoring. So there's an proposed location for a new monitoring well to be installed. And that monitoring well is going to be equipped with a groundwater level sensor with telemetry so that data will be broadcast to the internet in real time. Once we get that up and running, the that data was going to be, it will be put into a report format, spreadsheet format with data trends that will be provided to to the Water and Sewer Department on a monthly basis during normal periods and as the drought severity increases, we will increase the frequency at their request up to, you know, weekly, if that's appropriate. So that we can both monitor and track the status of the groundwater in of the at the site. So, you know, the the important part is between is between the irrigation wells and the Deaconess Wells. So as John Rogers himself acknowledged, that it's this may take a little bit of time to understand what the data is telling us, but historically that that this data has never existed before. So that, you know, there's a benefit to the town and that we that the Country Club will be collecting data that has never been collected before and being provided to the town to assist the town's water management decisions. I'm not sure. I have a whole lot more to say on the subject, but
Okay.
I'm certainly available for.
Of course. Great. Okay. Yeah, let's keep going and then we'll we'll come back to questions. The next person on your team.
Am I on? Lili Morse.
I can hear you. I cannot see you.
Okay, it said that I could not start video because the host has stopped it.
Heather, is that, oh, there you are. Okay, great.
Okay. Hi. So I am a landscape architect. I was brought into this project roughly six weeks to two months ago. I think also at the suggestion of the ZBA to provide a planting plan and some views from of the the berm that's going to be created to create this irrigation well. And so I don't know if it's possible for you to show any plans.
It is. I think that would be helpful, Heather. All right, Elizabeth.
Which?
So I think if we could start with
Planting plan?
The berm planting plan, that would be helpful.
Just to point out, in case people didn't realize, the first hearing, sorry, unrelated to this, Simes was continued until our next meeting. I don't know. There's just a lot of people here. Some of you might be here for that hearing. So just to let you know, we will be hearing that in July.
Great. Thank you. Actually, Julie, it's there's that's, there's another one that's more of a blown up version of that that would be helpful.
That's also in this PDF. So just scroll down.
Okay.
Okay, hang on. So which?
Keep. So there's another one that we're not.
There we are.
Yeah, great. So I'll start with this plan. So just as a brief explanation, the the berm is, there's going to be a berm created by the the excavation and building up this irrigation pond. And the area that's in yellow with the plants, various plants in it is the slope of the berm. And I we have proposed evergreen screening towards the bottom of the berm and and partway up in the in the form of white pines and white spruce, both of which are, it's all native and then interspersed as the native woods are with red maples and black cherries. And then farther up the slope, it's important that there not be tall trees close to the irrigation pond. Because I, my understanding is that if you don't want to collect a lot of leaf debris in the pond. So I, there's going to be a base, we're proposing a base ground cover of a conservation wildlife mix, a seed mix that will stabilize the slope. And then we will plant the trees and the shrubs in that in that mix. I, it's not a solid planting, but I, it's a variety of trees and shrubs and essentially I gave a space between them. And for instance, like the witch hazels, which are some of the shrubs that I've recommended, they get to be between 15 and 20 feet tall and or 20 to 30 feet high and 15 to 20 feet wide. And so I based my on centers on what the ultimate size would be so that you get the optimal growth of these plants. And my understanding from some of the feedback from NRC is that they would like to see everything a lot closer. And just as an explanation of how I determined how close they should be was based on individual plants ultimate size so that they could grow as well as possible. And so then you will also see that I listed the square foot of planting at roughly 42,000 square feet. So that only includes the part that's in yellow. It does not include the the green, which is on the slope above. And Peter and Greg could talk more closely about that. That is part of the golf course. And so my understanding is that that's just a fescue mix that is that they will mow. They can talk about once, once or twice a year, but it is, it can't be planted or reforested because it will impact the golf course. So if you then move to and another drawing. I'm looking. So this drawing I've taken actually the the survey prepared by Stamske McNary. And I tried to give context to my more detailed planting plan. And you can see two points, A and B on that plan. And I went out with Greg and Peter onto the site and we photographed photographed the proposed site from those points. And then I took computer modeling prepared of the proposed proposed grading and I overlaid the the grading with my photographs, which shows, and that would be that point A is the name, you know, the neighbors, some, one of the two of the neighbors along Williams Road. And then if you go to the next drawing, that. So one of those, so that is an elevation of the berm. An architectural elevation as opposed to respective elevation, the top one. And in order to illustrate my point, the vertical, the vertical elevation is doubled, which and the horizontal elevation is to scale. And then the the bottom sketch is my compilation. And you can see that in the next drawing, the next one, when we get there of the computer modeling with my photographs. So and you can see the photographs that I took on the next page. And then the next one is sort of a bird's eye view, again, done with the computer modeling modeling of what the elevations will look like from bird's eye view to show how the berm will be planted and what and the context of the irrigation pond within the work. And then the next drawing shows the computer modeling of the bird's eye view and then two photographs taken from neighbors on William, I mean, close to the property line is actually on Concrete Country Club property. Showing the view through the trees and the bottom photograph was taken on April. April, I can't remember, April 20 or so. And then and then the top ones were taken three weeks later. So it shows the difference in the vegetation. And I'm happy to answer any questions when the time comes.
Great. Thank you. Was there someone else who is going to?
No, Madam Chair, there's, that's the end of our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
That's great. Thank you very much. Well, there's obviously a lot to unpack here. I will say from my perspective, this was, this what was given to us was extremely beautiful. And the first time that I've kind of I at least thought I had a whole comprehensive view of what was going on. So I think that, thank you for for giving us that. I think trying to figure out how to unpack this the easiest way. Theo, I think given your your expertise here, I'd like to start with the science. I mean, I know we're dealing with aesthetics. We're dealing with a whole bunch of things. So I'm going to throw it to you for questions you have, hydrology questions or otherwise, because I know you have some.
Thanks. Thanks for giving me your first first shot here. I agree with you. I agree with you. This was, this was a good comprehensive package and this was answers to questions we asked last time. And I I'm appreciative of that. So that's that that was that that was very good. On the geohydrology, I think that's that's my my most, I think, almost direct question is in 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 a sentence or two. Why is this good for the town? Why, why is this 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 pond and and everything that goes with it? I know that there is a Why, why is this, this, this pond and, and everything that goes with it? Yeah, I, I know that there is a, um, that the whole irrigation system, the headsets, controllers and what have you, are being updated and modernized. So that's, that's, so that's part of the package. But why is just this irrigation pond, and what goes along with that, better, a, a good thing for the town?
Well, I'll try to tackle that. I'm a lawyer, not a hydrogeologist, so I know Peter Newton will back me up. Um, I think it's twofold. First, there will be monitoring well on the Brook, Jenny Dugan Brook, that will, is not there now, and that will provide a benchmark for the relationship between the golf course program and the Brook, which obviously feeds other water sources. And then secondly, the hydrology or the pressure study that Peter has put together, for the first time, it, it could be useful in establishing a protocol with the municipal water, uh, sources across the street uh, in instances of drought. Uh, and I think going forward, there's an opportunity to link the two, so that in, if there is a severe drought, we have something in place for the parties to talk and to solve problems.
Thank you. That actually, I, I have a lot of comments on, on plans, but I, I, I think I'm going to reserve those for later. Let's run through questions first of all, but that would be my suggestion.
Sure. Um, questions from people other than you, Theo? All right. Anyone else on the board want to start off then?
I have, uh, I think two questions. Let me, let me stick first with the geohydrogeology since we started that. This is a question uh, with respect to the well management plan. I'm trying to understand, um, I understand that in the well management plan or the, um, that as, um, drought conditions go, first you stop irrigating certain areas of the, of the course, like the rough, et cetera. And then you reduce and reduce, but right at the end with the, um, the most severe emergency drought situation, I think it, right now, it shows like a to be determined. Um, and I'm trying to understand who, I, I appreciate that you're gonna all talk, the town's gonna talk, and you're gonna talk and all that. But at the end of the day, it's an emergency situation. If you can't agree, who gets, who gets to decide what you're doing there? Under that, under the terms of the plan.
Actually, Mark, that's probably more of a question for you than it is for me. I mean, the purpose of that, the purpose of the asterisk there, uh, under that emergency drought was to provide a context that, you know, we had, we had committed to reductions as the drought severity increases, right? Now, we didn't know, I didn't, we didn't think it was appropriate to, to pick a number in a, in a drought emergency, you know, to, to say, you know, fifty thousand gallons a day, or whatever the number would be. Um, because we don't have a, a severe drought that extends for a long period of time, fifty thousand gallons a day might be too much. So that the whole purpose of that asterisk was to, to basically commit the country club to, to working closely with water and sewer, Concord Water and Sewer, to determine what level of pumping would be appropriate and have it be flexible. So if the droughts, if the drought severity extends or, 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 or gets more severe, then you, there's a room for the, there's room for further discussion about further reduction in pumping, but, but obviously it'll never go above a level four drought stage. Um, it wouldn't get to that point, um, because if we're in a level five or, you know, severe emergency drought emergency.
Outside.
Yeah.
That, uh, you know, so that's more or less the cap on the volume of water that would be withdrawn in a drought emergency, but, but leaving it flexible. It's basically committing the country club and the, and the town, well, committing the country club to work with the town on developing, on figuring out what value, what volume would be appropriate. And having the, um, that, that, having the monitoring well in place and that data that the monitoring well is contributing would, would go a long way to informing uh, whether it's appropriate to run the irrigation wells or not. So it's a little hard because we don't, we, I, I don't know. It's been a very, very long time since we've been in a, had a drought emergency. So it's, it's a little hard to predict what that level should be and who, you know, who should make a call. Because we, and we don't have the data from the monitoring well, which isn't yet in, to inform, uh, a management decision.
And to follow up on Peter's, uh, statement, I, I think what's important for the purposes of the special permit in front of the ZBA is a protocol, which doesn't exist today. So if the end result of an emergency, a dire emergency, is that there's a requirement that the two parties sit down and talk, I, I think these are two very responsible parties. There's also the DEP permitting and regulations in play here. Um, we have authorization from DEP. The town is not really a player in that authorization, so I hate to uh, have, I, I, I hate to have a territorial battle between our permit by DEP and the town's needs. I, I think protocol is the answer. If we're forced to sit down, it will work out. I, I can't imagine a situation in which uh, the country club says, the hell with it, our, our grass is more important than your water. There will be a compromise. You're already at fifty-eight thousand or whatever the number was, uh, in the stage above that. Um, so there's, there's very little left there to, to divide between the two parties.
So, so, um, Mr., I'm gonna follow up and say, Mr. Borowski, that, let, let's you and I play lawyer for a second. So the, the answer to the question, I think, is that, um, at the end of the day, people sit down and they talk and they do whatever. But at the end of the day, the, the country club would have the contractual right under this plan, if you will, to follow its DEP permit, and to proceed even if the town said, really, we really want you to do some more. I mean, I'm not saying you will. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that just as the matter of, I mean, what I'm reading and seeing is that ultimately that would, that would be the end of that. And, and I take all of the rest of your points.
I, it's hard to, it's hard to envision, uh, more concrete arrangements at this point in time. There's, as Peter said, a monitoring well yet to be established. This is a, a situation which, while it may be foreseeable, is not likely, uh, I hope, having just planted my yard. Um, and I'm sure many people in the audience have as well. So trying to come up with a concrete answer somewhere between zero and fifty-eight thousand is difficult at this point in time. But two responsible parties communicating with each other will come to a conclusion.
Um, so my second question, uh, Madam Chair, if I can go on to that, is the, um, has to do with the, the planting plan. And, and I'm, and this is a question, um, there was that, maybe, I don't know if we could put it back up again for just a second. I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what I'm looking at here. Um, thanks, Elizabeth. So if you could scroll down to the one that kind of shows the elevation from the side, up, there you go. So in that top photo there, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what I'm seeing is the, I, I couldn't figure out if the, how the trees at the, on the far right of that, not the top sketch, on the trees on the far right, I mean, is there, is that just, those are closer to me than the berm, which is in back of them? Is that what I'm seeing?
The berm that you see behind you is, behind, not behind you, behind those trees is the one that's part of the golf course that was in green on the plan. The, when you, if you look at the, sort of, there's a dip and there's the flat area, um, to the left of that, that's the, that's the pond. You know, we'll never see the pond from down below because the water level is actually two feet below the top. But that, that is the berm, um, to the left. And the area to the right is, um, if you go scroll up or down to one of the, so that's that area.
And does that exist now? I mean, I don't, I'm not saying now, because I know there's been some construction already, but did that exist before that berm? Can somebody?
So that would, um, Peter would need to speak to that. I, I, there is a green up there, so something existed. Um, but I think, I believe we're recontouring it, and so probably.
I, I'm, I'm trying to, I, I, the, the bulk of my question here is to try to, to, and I thought that that, that, um, thing from, that, that idea from the side there was helpful, was, I'm just trying to understand what, you know, how the, the view of that area is different from the view that is there now. That's, I mean, or was there before we started?
I don't know what it looked like before, but if you look at, I, if, I don't know how much you know about grading plans, but if you, the dotted lines are existing conditions. And then when it becomes a straight line as shown, um, that is what's going to be newly contoured. But if you then go down to my sketches, um, down below, I'm sorry, the photographs, um, which, right there. So the one on the left is not quite as far over as, um, I mean, it's not as, as far over as that elevation where you said, is that the berm with the trees behind it? But you really, there's enough topography between the existing woods and close to neighbor, neighboring properties that you actually can't really see from that angle.
Can we get an answer after that, the first question? Sorry to cut you off, but some, what, someone on the team must know what the, what that looked like before anything was done to it.
Yeah, I've been communicating with Greg Sinkata, and he can answer that question for you.
Great.
So going back, if you wanna, if you wanna move one of, to the, one of those other slides that shows that top area, that area there. So uh, you can pick either where the, where those dark green, there's about, about six dark greens. I think that's the area to the right that you're referring to. Those dark green, the trees that are planted in there, is that correct, Jim? Is that the side that you're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, so naturally, that, that area there did go up. That was, that did, the topography does go uphill to the golf course. Um, a lot of that, when you look at the, the houses that are closer um, on Williams Road heading up that way, the topography actually does go up. Um, so, um, that will, there is, obviously, there's some of that has been lowered now, but the natural topography did go up. And so that would, that would get planted, it would be up on the right-hand side.
They're taking off on that. That was the woodland that was cut down, is that right?
That was the wood, that was the section, well, yeah, all of it was the woodland that was cut down. And that will now be, that, that yellowish-green color, that will be part of the golf course. So there'll be a T on the other side of the water. And then that'll be, they'll be hitting over the golf course, over the, over the water pond into the fairway, which will be basically to the left of those, of those five or six trees. They'll be going straight over that from the tee back over to that area.
Um, okay. Do we have easily accessible, um, photos, aerial photos of, of Elizabeth? The conditions?
Yeah, I believe so. Just a second.
Sure. And I think this will help with your question.
Be great.
Can you see that?
You might need to blow it up a little bit or, or make it, or make, you know, move it, move it a little bit closer to for me to explain, to me, for me to explain some of that, that, what you're, what you're looking at.
Um.
I can, I mean, from there I can do it. I, I just, I mean, if you'll bear with me a little bit. The, the, the point at the, at the end there, um, down at the bottom, okay. So a little bit to the left of that, maybe about a half an inch to the left of that, going, following that line. Those are about the way those six trees are planted. Okay?
Sorry, the six trees, the six trees that I'm seeing that, that were, the berm is in back of, or the, the hill or something is in back of them?
Yeah, it's, it's basically in that, a little bit further down, a little bit further, oh, what, no, going away, going the other, yeah, right around that area there.
Okay. When is this photo from?
Looks like now.
Yeah, this is.
I believe that's pretty current from.
Do we have anything before that, before the, the cutting?
No, we do not.
Okay, so.
You can do Google Maps, it would show it.
Um, I'm wondering if.
I, I believe that. Bring, I can bring something up, but it'll take a few minutes.
All right, let, I mean, part of the reason I want to know, and Jim, I'm, I don't know if it's, is talking about what Delia referenced in her, um, memo. And I know there's conversations about this, having been mature, woodland not being able to be returned to woodland and had to be, having to be left the way it is due to debris in the pond, it sounds like making it more playing area. Uh, Jim, are we, is this what you were headed towards?
Yeah, I think that I, yeah, to, to my mind, um, I mean, we'll have a lot of discussion here tonight. I don't mind tipping my hand a little bit. To, to my mind, um, there are, you know, uh, two issues as I think, I, I think there are two, two questions that I still have in my mind. One is the ones that Theo was raising about, um, the benefit to the town, which I think, again, to just tip my hand a little bit, I think there is some pretty important benefits to the town, both in terms of the monitoring well to an important water source or to an important environmental source. Um, and just the idea that there's more cooperation and so forth with the town as opposed to uh, causing the country club to dig a, a new well and do everything from below ground. And you don't know exactly what, you know, is going to be pulled out of the ground under those circumstances, maybe necessarily. Um, the second is, is that, as, as I understand it, that what was an elevated area that was in pretty dense woodlands um, is one way or the other going to become an elevated area, uh, that, at least in part, um, is no longer sort of the woodland, uh, regime. It's, it's, um, you know, on, probably unquestionably beautiful grass, but nevertheless grass and nevertheless sort of a part of the golf course up there. And so all I'm trying to do is understand, and that is in what I am understanding is the, uh, to be the primary uh, concerns of the neighbors is, is sort of that view, either because of the density of the trees toward the bottom or the fact that there's sort of a, uh, as again, as I understand it, kind of a bald area where there was trees in the past. And so I'm trying to do is just understand what the before and after was, um, so that I can evaluate that. And under, just understand it.
Yeah. Um, Elizabeth, you still need some more time? I can move on to another question. We can head back to this.
Break up the, before? Yeah.
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 Okay, um, any?
So I just, so can I just, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, so can I, if I could just go back to that one, uh, maybe that's too hard, but that, then that picture, I understand the six or so trees, um, um, Mr. Sinkata are, you know, that's, that's sort of that, that area up, up to that, that area. And then if I go to the left of that, if I understand it from the, um, from the plan, that lower area is actually where this pond is.
That's correct.
And, and then.
The what?
Is where the pond actually is in back of that, right?
Well.
Yes.
Okay.
Where, where, where it's a straight line.
Uh huh.
That's, the pond is on the other side of that, yes.
Okay. All right. And then this is your, and as it's drawn here, this is my last question, as it's drawn here would be sort of your, your landscape plan, and are, as drawn, are those trees, you know, sort of where they will be at some maturity, or are they kind of in between, or what's the, I just?
They're pretty small. I mean, I drew them in not as mature trees, and I, I mean, I can give every, I, list of, you know, how big tree each of these plants get, and how fast they grow, and what their ultimate size is, but I purposely did not draw them in as big trees.
Thank you.
I drew, drew them in as, you know, fairly close to what they're going to look like when they go in.
Okay, thanks.
There, Elizabeth has up. You just want to move your cursor around the area we were looking at in the other.
Okay.
Okay.
So, that area that, that we, that Elizabeth just drew her cursor around, that wooded area there, or up a little bit, that area in there, that's now going to be part of the golf course and, and, and a fairway or something, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Your big chance, if you want to.
Excuse me?
You want to circle back to any of those questions you, you had mentioned, or?
Oh, no, I, I was, I think that maybe Ravi or would have some questions. But I, 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 I did, you know, obviously, since, since there's a planting plan up on the screen, and you know, I, and this is more of a comment that I had rather than, than a question, and that's why, but I, I do like to tag on, on Jim's, where Jim was going, the planting plan itself, I, I'm not sure whether I completely agree with the National Resources letter significantly increasing the amount of plant material. I do think that there is some room to, to add some, and I, and I think especially responding to the neighbors. You know, I, I have no, no qualms about the plant choices, et cetera. And, you know, the grass seed makes is, is good, and I actually like open areas of grass in between, in between trees, but I think from a visibility point of view from the neighbors, I think it would be, it would be an improvement if there were a few more evergreens, white pines sprinkled in a little bit higher up the slope, as, as high as, as actually the, the civil engineer feels comfortable with, because it's, it's obviously on his, on his berm. But that, that would be an improvement, I think, you know, and it would be a bit of a, it would help the National Resources comments out, and it also, I think, would, would, would be a good gesture towards the neighbors. And then indeed.
So, your objective, and what you said that you don't totally agree with, it's the.
There is, there is, you know, I, I don't think, you know, a fully full dense planted area in, in the quantities as a national resource area, or the National Resources Commission. Might not have the benefits that, that everybody is hoping for, or thinks is needed. And, and then, you know, there is tagging on to, to James' comment, where indeed, that, that sort of the goal of, of the playing, how far can plant material, can the area be reforested without impacting that, that golf play? And, and I'm not sure whether we push that boundary as far as we, as we can. And that's, that's the goal that Jim was focusing on.
Yeah, which gets into our entire, the, the entire other issue here of what we're trying to accomplish, and goes now into the, the alternatives. So, we're coming at this very late stage, the trees are already gone, they've already made the decision about which alternative to choose. And now, is it, and I, I'm not necessarily making a judgment one way or the other, but now it's done, so how much are we pushing back, and you're saying, Theo, you know, what, what's playable? How much of all that should factor into our decision here, when we're being forced to start a position we wouldn't have been forced to start in the first place? I just raised that for the entire rest of the conversation as well. That being said, pragmatically, we are where we are, and.
Right, 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 and, and, and then, you know, we could have been in this position, I mean, if we would have start, started from scratch, and we've had an alternatives analysis, this could have been the alternative picked. Right? So, it's like we, you know, so we could have, we could have been here.
Well, I agree, and I think we kind of are in a situation where we need to look at the alternatives to see it in some way, if this is where we would end up. Robbie, did you have more, or Theo, did you have more questions, did I cut you off? Apologize.
No, I'm all set.
In a moment. Robbie?
Yeah, you know, I, I think we've heard some answers from the country club team to the, to, number two and three of the NRC's comments. Number one of the NRC's comments was about, you know, the plan for the monitoring well being modified to monitor the brook and the wetlands, and the impact there. I didn't know if there was any kind of anything that the country club wanted to say to that point about impact on the brook, and how the monitoring might play into how we understand that impact.
More is the response from the applicant?
I, I'll let Peter respond to that in just a second. May I just backtrack for a second and talk about the planting plan? The country club is not opposed to planting more, but we're, we're kind of looking to have a conversation, I know Natural Resources made the recommendation. Perhaps Elizabeth could try to work on some more concrete details that's somewhere between the point two and three in the letter from Delia, and something north of where she has drawn her plans today. So, I, I just want to indicate that if, if you want more trees, there's every agreement on our part to provide them within reason. And I'll let Peter address the monitoring plan for the brook.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So, at the last meeting, a couple of months ago, I guess it was, there was a, the discussion of the brook came up, and so shortly after that, I went out, I, I had, my suspicion was that, having talked to Peter Rapochoe, asking him the status of that stream during August, July, August, September, there's always, seems to be water flowing in, and my suspicion is that that stream is then, that is a groundwater-fed stream, so I wanted to test that. So, I went out and I installed a pizometer, which is a, which is a small, you know, three-quarter inch diameter monitoring well with a, with a one-foot well screen on the end. I drove that into the, into the brook by hand, I drove it about three feet down below the sediment, below the, the sediment of the brook. And I wanted to see what the relationship between water level in the stream and water level inside the pizometer was, now a a stream that is, that is a losing stream, because in hydrogeologic terms, a losing stream is a stream that contributes water to groundwater, so water is in the stream, there's more water in the stream, and it, and it recharges groundwater. A gaining stream is a stream that accepts recharge from groundwater. Now, that can be, water flows from areas of high pressure to areas of low pressure, just like water in a pipe, and, you know, everywhere else, it flows from high pressure to low pressure. We put that, I put that monitoring well in, and, or the pizometer in, and gauged it, and the water level at that time, back in May, back in early May, the water, water was about two feet higher inside the pipe, it was about eighteen inches higher inside the pipe than the water level in the stream, suggesting or, or demonstrating a very strong hydro, hydrologic gradient vertical into the stream from groundwater. There's, I had Peter Rapochoe go out and do the same, you know, take another measurement this afternoon, because we anticipated this comment. And we still have about fourteen, fifteen inches of, of difference of, that the water inside the pizometer is higher. And because that, that water in that pizometer is registering water level about three feet below the stream, that's groundwater, that there's a, a very strong driving force of water from groundwater up into the stream. Now, this area is far enough away from the irrigation wells that we wouldn't expect to see really any impact, minimal, a few inches maybe of impact from drawdown, that the wells are, are operational now, they're are irrigating. So, at this point, the stream, Jenny Dugan Brook is receiving, is a receiving stream, it is a gaining stream, is taking water from groundwater. Groundwater is the primary source of water for, for Jenny Dugan Brook. Nothing that the country club is proposing is going to change the hydrogeologic character, the hydrologic characteristic, the groundwater hydrology in a negative way, in fact, having the irrigation pond and the ability to capture rainwater and to minimize and to optimize operations, decoupling well pumping from irrigation would only improve the situation, the existing situation where water is, water is entering the Jenny Dugan Brook from groundwater. So, I would not anticipate that in the future, that the flow, the historic flows of Jenny Dugan would be impacted adversely beyond what they may or may not be today. Now, that pizometer can stay, it was intended to be, it was intended to be temporary, just to kind of get a sense for whether the Jenny Dugan is a, is a gaining or a losing stream. We've answered that question, but we're more than, more than happy to leave it in there, and we can, we can continue to monitor the water level in, in that pizometer, you know, for as long as you guys would like.
Okay, that is a good answer to that first comment, Robbie?
Yeah, I, I, I wonder if NRC is trying to, well, I guess their comment dates back a ways, but the monitoring well, we're using it to in, to evaluate impact on the Deaconess Wells, right, is that by kind of monitoring groundwater levels that are available for the town's wells versus the country club's wells, or what's the, what's the link there that helps the monitoring well? Or why is the monitoring well helpful to Deaconess Wells, or understanding of Deaconess Wells?
So, it'll obtain, that monitoring well is going to provide data that, that hasn't existed since the, since the irrigation wells have, were installed twenty-odd years ago, all right? So, right now, the, there does not appear to be any influence on, on the irrigation wells with, to the Deaconess Wells. And I only say that because the town has never raised, and I've talked to Alan about this, the town has never noticed or identified a circumstance where their well operations appear to be impaired by the operation of the irrigation wells. But no one has any data, no one's had any data to say one way or the other, whether that's true or not. This monitoring well, which is again, not the pizometer, that's a different location, that's a different subject. This monitoring, that we're, we're proposing to install between the irrigation wells and the Deaconess Wells will provide data that'll show when the Deaconess Wells are operational, what is that, what happens to the water level in the, in the monitoring well? When the club's irrigation wells turn on and turn off, how does water table respond at the monitoring well? And then, over time, and John Rogers acknowledges that this is going to take time, because, you know, it takes time for the data, and for a signal to appear out of the data. Over time, we'll be able to possibly tease out the relative effect on the region, you know, in the regional, and I say regional in a sort of a limited sense, not the, you know, not all of Concord, but in the area between the irrigation wells and the Deaconess Wells, that region will be able to understand how each of those wells contributes to groundwater level and groundwater fluctuations, and, and then develop a real, you know, I mean, a real plan that says, okay, we are showing, when we turn on the irrigation wells, we're showing X amount of drawdown at the irrigation well. Now, we can extrapolate that out, what that means over at the Deaconess Wells. But, and then we can say, all right, so now it is clear, you know, whatever the impact might be, and now we can have a real program to how to manage the irrigation wells, vis a vis the requirements of the Deaconess Wells to produce water.
So, that data is more for the region between those two sets of wells versus between the wells and the brook, I guess?
Yeah, it really is.
Or, I, I guess it's the data, would the data from the monitoring will be useful in understanding the brook as well?
Yeah, it may, it may, I mean, it, it, I mean, I think the pizometer is more useful, to be honest with you, because it's much more, I mean, the this, this monitoring well, between the, between the, the irrigation and Deaconess Wells, will probably be set fifty to sixty feet below ground, the screen interval will be deep. By necessity, that's where both of these wells, both of those production wells are drawn. The pizometer is only three feet below the surface, much more tied into local and temporal changes in hydrogeology, in the water table in that region of the Jenny, of the Jenny Dugan Brook.
So, so that the flow of the brook is probably not coming from sixty feet deep, is what you're saying?
That, that's, that's correct, I mean, it's all, all the groundwater is, you know, it's all flowing, but, but the immediate water that's getting into the Jenny Dugan Brook is coming from the near surface.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions before I open up for public comment?
So, my other question is just understanding what, what's the course design change that's going to incorporate the pond, are you, are you lengthening the hole that kind of doglegs to the side of it, so that you're kind of teeing off from farther away, or are you adding a hole? I'm just trying to understand what that is, and then the neighbors' letter mentioned that there may be some sort of overall course design project in the works, and I want to understand what that was, and if there are other changes in the, in the course design that are contemplated.
At this, no, there, that would, your first part is that would just be adding of the tee onto the fairway and just lengthening that hole there, but there'd be no other design changes. As far as any other golf course work that's being done, there is no design changes to the golf course or impacts, or, you know, movements or anything. I mean, we may do, we may add a few, you know, a tee or a bunker or something like that, but those are, those are minimal, I mean, but there's no, no, no design changes or additions to the golf course.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and open up to public comment, if, again, you could either press raise hand or star nine, if you're on the phone. And Heather and Elizabeth, help me out here, if you see anyone. There, Tara, I see Tara O'Donnell. Heather, I'm going to go ahead and, there you go. Hi, Tara.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am Tara O'Donnell, I live at ten South Meadow Ridge, and I am in a butter to the golf course. If I had a good baseball arm, I could hit the thirteenth green or the fourteenth fairway, depending on, on the curve. And I support the project, as I mentioned, which I'll go into shortly. And I am also in, here in the capacity, I'm also a member of the country club. And I've spoken to numerous members of the club, and we were dismayed when we heard about the missteps at the beginning of this project, and for that, we apologize. We are residents of Concord, we're your neighbors, we love this town, we love the club, and at no point would we ever intentionally hurt the ecosystem of our community. And to that end, even though this process has been long, I think that the project is better because of the input and the process that we're undertaking right now. As folks have mentioned, we are going to start with a new protocol, we're going to have We're going to have monitoring of the the Brook, the drought management plan. Enhanced protection for the drinking water. Now, we're we're very lucky. We're not like Wayland dealing with PFAS issues. And I think that. I want to say, as a member of Concord, we, the membership is understands our duty as. Stewards for the great natural resource that we have. And we want to protect it not only for now, but for future generations. And I think that I feel bad that the neighbors, that the rhetoric has has gotten quite. Toxic, and I hope that they know that we will do everything in our power to mitigate their issues. And we stand committed. To making sure that this project moves forward and that they are happy. And we think that this is a benefit for both the club and the town. And during COVID, as I had mentioned, I'm very close to the club. The golf course was closed and there were so many people that were not members of the club. Drapes into my backyard to go hiking and I see them cross-country skiing and. It is a beautiful resource that we all love and we all protect and. This project is for an irrigation, but it's also going to help the town. And we just want you to know that we support it. We hope that you will approve this permit. And allow this project to conclude so we can start doing generations of conservatorship and stewardship.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? I cannot hear you.
Someone speaking.
Elizabeth from you.
You can hear me now?
Yeah. Yes, Jack, we could hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that, folks. Jack Madigan, two one five Prairie Street. I just had a couple of questions with regard to the historical water usage. With regard to the. One of the documents that was filed on the documents page Bristol Engineering to Peter Rapochoe on February first, twenty twenty one. And it discusses the water usage of the country club. I was concerned by reading this because the country club can only extract one hundred and twenty thousand. Gallons a day. That that's what their limit is. Obviously, the reason that they're looking to do a pond is so that on those slower periods in the early months, they can fill the pond. And use up to their hundred and twenty to fill the pond. But after that, when they're in the in the. Drought months during the summer, they could rely on the pond to pump into onto the course and water. The course that way. However, if you look at the average daily uses and what they're allowed to do. They're pretty much over every single. Average daily, you know, amount. I I just don't understand. And then there is also a thing here that according to club personnel. The course requires approximately twelve hundred gallons per minute for four to six hours in the early morning to fully irrigate. And that's one of the reasons for this, for this new. The pond and everything else. This equates to between two hundred and sixteen thousand and two hundred and eighty-eight thousand gallons per day during dry periods. Well, they're only allowed a hundred and twenty thousand. Per day limit. That's, you know, DEP. That was what they were given. So I'm really curious to know. How they're able to do this? And is this going to come out in the monitoring? I understand the monitoring well handles. It looks at how much groundwater and things like that, and if it's getting too low. Is that also monitoring how much they are using on a daily basis? And will it shut off or something else when they hit their limit on a daily basis?
I'm gonna I'm gonna give the applicant an opportunity to respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'll respond to it. Peter Rapochoe, Golf Course Superintendent, Concord Country Club. Thank you for having us tonight. An answer to that question, just to clear up the facts, we are permitted by the DEP. For twenty-five point three six million gallons per year. The hundred and twenty thousand gallon per day that you mentioned is the average for the year. So. We're allowed two hundred and fourteen days to pump, divide that into twenty-five million, you work out to a hundred and twenty. Thousand gallons on average per day. So you are allowed to exceed on certain days. To go over that, we've submitted DEP water reports for the last twenty-five years. To the state, we have not had one issue. Our average per day. Usage is anywhere for the year between point zero eight and point zero nine. Gallons, and you take that into where that's about eighty to ninety thousand. We're allowed point one two, which is the hundred and twenty thousand gallon per average per per year. So. We are well within our permitting rights with DEP and we have not once exceeded anything that has violated our registration or our permit.
That's great. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Other questions?
Yeah, hi. Sorry, Alex Sharon, no, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Sharon.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ben.
No, Sharon, you go.
Thank you. Thank you, and. I appreciate all of the additional information that we've seen today.
Great. If you could just introduce yourself and say.
Sharon McGregor, seventy Williams Road. And just thank you for the additional information that we've seen today. However, I'd like to, if you could, perhaps at some point in the meeting, show that photograph of the. Area that was cut and show them side by side. It's quite a an alarming contrast for what was. You know, was in that it location and exists now in terms of the forest and ecosystem. And the Williams Road neighborhood, you know, has has suffered a tremendous loss in the in our neighborhood quality as a result of this project. And we have submitted a letter, which you have. And we thank the ZBA for all you've been doing to listen to our concerns and. Please review that letter and see in that really. What we believe is irrefutable justification for denial of the project. So we're asking for denial of the project. And with that denial, we would like to. Go back to what was requested earlier by the NRC, which is an independent third-party hydrological assessment. So that we can get some further information on the hydrological issues, which are very complex. And we would like an independent review of that. Secondly, we would like consideration of a non-engineering solution for implementation. That should be evaluated and clearly documented and assessed, and that would include. Ecological restoration, full restoration of the site to restore the 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 functions that that forest, that ecosystem serve to recharge groundwater. As well as the many other ecological functions that it served. That needs to be restored. That might be part that should be part of a non-engineering solution. Second part of that would be water conservation. Because as you look forward with climate, we're going to be seeing increased drought. And to the point where we question whether this project could ever work in terms of supplying the water needs of the course. So you have to look at alternatives. You have to restore the the forest that recharges the groundwater. You have to. Aggressively increase and improve water conservation. And you need to practice sustainable turf management, which we understand that certification has has lapsed and. It's very questionable now as to whether you could be recertified for sustainable turf management. So we're asking that the the club be required to take the steps that they would have been required to take absent. They're moving forward on their own with the project. We ask the ZBA to not allow a fait accompli. This project must be done right or not done at all. And to be done right, the project we feel should be. Designed in the context of the pleasant, the present climate emergency. Local decisions matter. With respect to hydrological conditions, ecosystem functions, microclimate, local climate effects. And cumulatively, local decisions add up to have broader impacts or benefits, depending on how they are designed. In this case, we want clear benefits all around. We really can't do anything less, given the changing situation with the climate. So we ask your your consideration of what we submitted in writing. And we ask for denial of the project and a look at a non-engineering solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Baron, are you still there?
Yeah, hi, Baron Comgene, ninety-nine Williams Road. I've been obviously attending a lot of, I know you've heard from me, and I appreciate all the thoughtful comments from the board and. Information provided, and I really am dismayed that we're in this position. Because we really have no intention to be adversaries of the country club. We have always. Respected the institution. We know members. We. Absolutely have enjoyed living near them and understand the value of their open space. And so that this particular process and events that have happened have put us at odds with them. Is most unfortunate, and it has really been sort of a heartbreaking thing to go through because. We really tried early on to understand what was going on here. And it's not that we're adverse to any projects. We understand the course needs evolve. We understand that the course is. The golf course is the country club's primary asset. And that without water, they cannot maintain it. And so. We. Saw, as I mentioned, things happening. And we were told things early on in the process. And so we're actually a year past the applicant withdrawing their initial application, which they filed in March. The clear cutting began the prior early December. So where I appreciate that the applicant has put together a more comprehensive proposal. But I will say that it's taken a year and I hear a lot of things that were done at the ZBA suggestion. Or at the Department of Public Works suggestion. But what I keep hearing from the zoning board is that they really wanted to see something presented comprehensively. That would address all the issues and sell this project. In this location, because I think that's an important distinction to make. Nobody's saying that the country club can't manage their water. But the question is, is this an appropriate location? Is this an appropriate design? And is having a storage pond appropriate, given concerns about town water and other things? And unfortunately, it's not only been an extended period of information coming out in drifts and drabs. But there's been a lot of commitments made by the country club to us personally and to the Department of Public Works or engineering. That aren't true. So I give the example of. The. Engineer for the country club submitted eight plans that were stamped by the engineer. That did not comply with the town bylaws. It was a prohibited use because they were violating the four-foot groundwater rule. And so. It wasn't that they resolved that with engineering prior. Engineering had to correct it and then they came back and submitted. And so there's the litany of these things, NRC concerns, they said they addressed them and they weren't. And so I spent significant time this last month looking at. All of the paperwork, and it's very hard to sort out this whole process because and it's very complicated. And I've spoken to a lot of the town offices and officials and staff, and they've been great. They've been very helpful. They've worked with the applicant. They've requested things. They've worked, tried to work towards a pragmatic solution. But the reality is that it's been very difficult. And we even as residents, we're trying to. Work out some kind of a way that this could either through some design changes or other areas. But I can tell you that there's no way to assess. Whether something can be screened or what someone's site views lines are without going on in the property. And if they've resisted that and they submitted applications time and again that say there is no impact to neighbors. There's no impact to the environment. This will be not be detrimental to the water supply. And when we keep hearing these things. Without seeing them take the action to ensure that these things are true. It's of cause of great concern. And so even with this water situation, I understand that pragmatic. Solution is to work out an agreement, but. I do really get concerned when the burden is of. Monitoring and communication and enforcement is put on the town. Because getting a permit is a carrot in this situation, and it's taken over a year for with a carrot, the permit for the country club to communicate. What they're what they're doing. And there's there's also no stick. So we talk about enforcement, the the NRC enforcement, those that was clear. They chose not to survey. They were in violation and they chose not to let the NRC on the property. They've been in the groundwater district for since they, you know, years and years, they filed under the bylaws for earth removal. And now they claim they didn't know and they're okay with that. And that their engineering and the trucking firms and all of these people who know that permits are needed. Did not comply with the permitting process. So I just want to say that I'm glad that people. Support the country club and I we do as as well, but I also feel we put a lot of work into our homestead. Into our house, and I know screening and I understand I've done a tremendous amount of invasive species removal. But when I stand in my yard or pull into my driveway and see this huge hill behind us and. Understand that there's going to be a burn there and there's no discussion about design considerations, what it's going to look like. And the board very specifically asked last time, not just for a planting plan, but to understand the changes to topography and how this. Will integrate with the course itself. We were told very specifically early on that this was not going to be a change to the course. There would be no golfers. We were told there was tree trimming around the perimeter and then we see all of this happen. And so. I, as I said, this has just been really heartbreaking and even this last issue of having to find that they're removing additional screening. In a footnote from an engineer's plan. That's not divulged in any narrative. After they promised us time and time again, we care about the ecosystem. We're not going to clear any more trees. And the reason for those that playing area that they're going to plant is they're dumping the soil that they're removing because they can't transport it offsite. In that location, and that's behind our elderly neighbor's house. And the plans are in pursuit, I mean, I had to learn how to read these engineering plans, but they really don't convey. And so I just want to put that out there. I thank you for your time and I thank you for your thoughtful questions and I I just want to. State that please think about the long-term consequences of getting into an arrangement that's not enforceable. And the country club needs their water and that tug of war with the town over their water is a problem, but thank you for your time and your efforts. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Gregor.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Gregor McGregor. I live seventy Williams Road. Across the street from the project and from Comgenes are very nice neighbors. I will address the legal aspects briefly, maybe in a couple of minutes. First of all. I think the original presentation tonight was old news. It was history we all knew. Secondly, I think the thrust of the presentation that was technical tonight. Was mitigation. And nobody's addressed the actual standards that you have to meet under the bylaw to get an approval from this board in its discretion. This is a discretionary permit. Be happy to legally brief that if you need to know what that means. It means you have the right to say no. Of course, you have to have findings and reasons. And we ask you to disapprove in your discretion when you're good and ready. Last hearing, I said you were good and ready. I said that the substance before you does not show compliance with the standards. Not a word tonight about the standards. Not a word tonight about whether the standards are met. It's about mitigation. Which I'll turn to in a second. Not avoidance. And an alternative analysis that you're asked to agree with is an after-the-fact justification. Just a conclusion that they didn't want a well. A new well. And they did not want an underground reservoir. Which, of course, public agencies are doing in order to protect it from climate change and pollution. But not this club. They want the very same thing they started doing. Second legal aspect I'd like to address is, as I said, that two hearings ago, maybe three, maybe four. This isn't after-the-fact permit. This is an after-the-fact permit. This is asking your permission to have done what they already did before they applied. Do they address that? No, they just hope you won't ask too many questions about what they removed, what they changed. You're asked to like the final product. You're finally getting from them like pulling teeth. Thirdly, I'd like to address that. Notice how the mitigation you're offered, such as it is, is only after, like the dentist, you're pulling teeth. So grudgingly, you now have them agreeing to install some electronics that will record data using telemetry to their consultant, not you. Unlike my other projects and cases and clients, this isn't going shared contemporaneously to anybody. You're told tonight you're going to get a report that shows trends in the data. You're not getting contemporaneous data. And furthermore, you have a landscape plan that's telling you basically what trees will be there and what shrubs. Not a word about the functioning of the tree layer, the shrub layer, and the herb layer. Not a word about the nursery and other sources of material. Not a word about the seasonal plantings. Not a word about what care they need, how they're going to be monitored, how they're going to be supervised, and whether there's going to be an 18-month or a 36-month period of time, as is typical in conditions in such things for large-scale subdivisions, housing projects, government projects, and anything under the wetlands laws. I echo that you have the legal right, fourthly, to require a peer review. I applaud members of this board and the staff and the other experts from Town Hall who are making themselves into hydrologists or hydrogeologists. The questions are very sophisticated, and they are right. But you need to have a person who is expert in groundwater and hydrology. And I will add hydraulics, which is different. Working independently for your board. This project is of a scale, an impact, a controversy, and issues that any other town board that has the authority to require a peer reviewer would routinely require a peer reviewer of your choice. And at the expense of the applicant. Cut and dried, routine, no ifs, no ands, no buts. I mean, you've done a great job becoming almost Nobel Prize experts. But, and you're asking the right questions, and you need to know, are you getting the answers? Are there other questions? What are the answers to those? By the way, they have to do with the standards finally being applied to this project as opposed to just learning more and more by pulling teeth about what they're grudgingly willing to offer you. The experts should deal with groundwater, hydrology, hydraulics, the alternatives available to a course, this course, such as a deep well or a underground reservoir. And pump and irrigation controls that can be done by this course in any event, never mind the project. If they're as good a neighbor as they say, and they're as interested in husbanding their water source as they are. Okay, what are the pumping and irrigation controls that you could put on in any event? And finally, as to landscaping, it has to be a lot more than just what are they willing to plan? Is that enough? How do you like it? Want some more? Want less? Want them closer together? Want them farther apart? A different nursery? You want a garden-type nursery, or do you want rough-grown stuff that will last better in the environment? Lastly, on the score of what's good for the town. If, as a member of the club, I believe, just said the club is a good neighbor because they allow cross-country skiing and hiking. I applaud the club because a few years ago, they banned it. They put up signs, no trespassing. You couldn't cross-country ski there anymore. And you couldn't sled there anymore. Could you imagine such a thing? If they're now allowing it, I applaud them. Secondly, as to my stream, which by the way borders my property at 70 Williams Road, Jenny Duncan Brook. Any hydrologist in Massachusetts now, or New England now, knows that most streams both gain and lose at different times of the year. That most streams do not always gain from groundwater or always contribute from groundwater to the stream. They are not always gainers and losers. I can tell you from experience that Jenny Duncan Brook probably qualifies as the typical one that both gains and loses depending on low-flow conditions, drought conditions, and the like. I'll remind everybody that we're talking here about Jenny Duggan Swamp, which feeds a town well over behind Sanborn School. And is controlled by one of the five beaver dams that are high priority for the town and its beaver team, called the Beaver Guys, to make sure nobody touches again. And it flows into Jenny Duggan Brook. It is the source of Jenny Duggan Brook, which is a perennial stream and goes up in two culverts under Williams Road and past the Comgenes into the golf course. This is a regional resource.
Mr. McGregor, I appreciate all of this. I just have to ask you to wind down a little bit because we're an hour into this.
Thank you for your indulgence. I'll take that seriously. Yes. We ask that on the strength of the permit application before you, but without prejudice to their filing a proper application, finally with the right information, let this be denied.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, other, any other comments?
I'd like a chance to respond to that one, but her comment is done.
Noted.
Let me just, may I speak, it's Rebecca Comgene?
Uh, sure. Rebecca, sorry, I'm going to give you the same disclaimer that it's been over an hour, so.
Sorry, Elizabeth, what was that?
Just if, if you would keep your comments succinct and understand that we've read the neighbor's letter and have heard what you've said so far, so.
Okay.
But go ahead.
Um, I will make it brief. I know some of this has already been said, and I, you know, but I just, I wanted it out there for the record and for people who are listening here. You know, I wanted to just briefly talk about conduct tonight and how that is very important. I mean, it's daunting to consider how far the original violating project would have proceeded.
Rebecca, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Did you give your name and address?
Oh, I think I said Rebecca Comgene 99 Williams Road. Daunting to think of the consequences if this had gone forth, if country club management had not been stopped. While not obtaining the permits for a project of this size is unthinkable. There were many other serious missteps made earlier on in this project that has caused for continued concern, put public health, safety, and natural resources of the town at risk. Well, sorry. Shockingly, there was not any surveying done at this site prior to the start of work. They did not stall any protections to surrounding areas, including the nearby sensitive, sensitive Jenny Duke and wetlands. They did not notify police, building inspector, and tan engineer of an entrance they added on Williams Road. They violated protected wetlands and refused to let town staff on property to review. They said they misunderstood the initial demand to stop work until surveying was done and continued working until second enforcement efforts had to be taken based on residences' observations once again. They cut into a massive hillside clearing four acres of trees and vegetation without discretion. They conducted major excavation and rapidly attempted to remove 56,000 cubic yards of soil on town roads without any approvals of any sort from public works, police, or other staff protecting town safety, once again violating town bylaws. They, this included our town, oh, sorry. Had this work not been observed and reported on by town residents, none of the essential countless conversations, reviews, negotiations, and potential agreements with public works, engineering, water, and sewer would have happened. This included our town engineers correcting eight versions of plans from the applicant's engineer that were still prohibited by town bylaws. If they cannot comply with existing bylaws and rules, it's not in the public's best interest to negotiate new agreements based on assumed compliance, given their past and continued actions. In closing, I want to expand on my comments about the general manager's actions at the Salem Country Club, his previous employer. In May of 2017, reports from residences, residences, residents indicated that trees had been cleared in a protective wetland. While the general manager denied any wrongdoing, he was ultimately found in violation of town laws. The country club was allowed to use the parking lot for their tournament, which was the reason that this was needed. While the town of Salem ultimately ordered restoration, the general manager achieved his objective of getting parking he otherwise wouldn't have had for the tournament. Now, in his role at Concord Country Club, the same tactics are being used. It is in the public and town's best interests to ensure that violators, violators are held accountable and do not benefit from violating the laws and rules of this town. Thank you for your time. That's it.
Thank you.
Please note my objection to those character assassinations. They have no part in tonight's hearing and should not be considered by the board.
Okay, let's, I'll finish taking comment, and then I'll let you respond.
Thank you.
Yeah. I see Deborah.
Elizabeth, I just, no comments. I just would like to add my voice as the largest abutter that I'd like this to deny.
Name and address.
Deborah Yaman, 115 Williams Road. And I'm the largest abutter to the country club, and I also would like the permit to be denied.
Okay, thank you. And I do not see anyone else's hands. So I am going to go ahead and close public comment. Mr. Bobrowski, I said you could have your response, so please.
I'll be, I'll be brief. Thank you. With regard to the call for a third-party peer review, it's my understanding that the town engineering or DPW department, and Mr. Cathcart in particular, recommended Peter Newton. It's not uncommon in a project that requires peer review for the parties to agree on a specific person and then to live and die with the consequences of that choice. I myself have frequently worked on projects in which the nature of the beast is the, it requires traffic review. If the two parties, that is, the applicant and the board, agree that a well-known traffic transportation engineer would, would do a good job on the project, that it's not uncommon that there be no further peer review. In any event, it's entirely within the discretion of the board whether to engage Chapter 44, Section 53G. Mr. Newton's credentials have not been attacked here in any way, shape, or form. And I think he's done a good job interpreting the data for all participants, including the audience members. With regard to the legal standards, this has been addressed. It's my understanding that in the original application was an earth removal narrative. It addresses the three specific criteria set forth in Section 7.5.3. I won't review those. They're in the record. And then I would also call your attention to the fact that on March 3rd of this year, Mr. Sincato filed a separate document which addressed the special permit criteria in the bylaw set forth in Section 11.6. And he did it in an adequate way, addressing each of the six criteria in turn. So those things are in the record. I won't reiterate them. I suspect we'll be back looking for final comments at another meeting, and I'll save it for that evening. Thank you.
I don't know why you would think that. That is. Um.
Intuition.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay. Thank you, everyone, for, for all of that. I, I really feel that tonight, it has been very hard up until now for all of us, have spent a lot of time on this, trying to piece it together. And honestly, I kind of feel that this, this latest submission is kind of where, where we should have been at the beginning. So now I kind of feel like we're at the beginning, in, in all honesty. With that, I mean, I am, my first instinct was to talk about getting a third-party reviewer. I understand your point about the board agreeing to use the same reviewer. We, we did not have any input into your consultant, and I'm not saying that, that he hasn't done a great job, but to me, that's where we are. Yes, the work has already been done. Who knows? You know, we may end up at exactly the same point, but I don't feel comfortable to make a judgment on, on the hydrogeology without someone who is a neutral party looking at it. Any other thoughts? Or disagreements or?
No, not, I, you know, I, from where I'm sitting, I don't necessarily feel the need for a third-party reviewer. It's sort of like, yeah, it wouldn't hurt, but I'm not quite sure whether we get, you know, other data that, you know, and I think, and I think we have some good responses from Water and Sewer, from our town departments. And they are satisfied, I think, with what we have been presented with. So that, and, and they know more than I do as far as groundwater goes. So they've been operating their wells for a while. So. But that being said, I yeah, I'll leave it up, you know, I'm open for other suggestions.
I mean, listen, I, unfortunately, whatever's been apologized for, there is a little bit of bad faith here, and you know, I'm just thinking about due diligence. One thing that we could do is go back to Alan Cathcart and say, do you feel that a third reviewer would be, you know, peer review would be helpful? We're taking the applicant at the applicant's word. Now, you may not be because you understand this data more than, you know, I think the rest of us, but I'm just not comfortable yet that we.
No, and, and everybody needs to be comfortable before making a vote on it.
Yeah, I think we can, there's, I mean, obviously, there are a lot of issues to hash out. The landscaping plan is one of them, in all honesty. It's not my threshold right now because I think we can get somewhere with that, but. Kim or Robbie?
Well, I guess I, I'm sort of trying to weigh it, Elizabeth, in a couple of different ways. I mean, I'm very sympathetic to the, to the, the simple fact here, which is that, you know, there was, there was a lot of woodlands on a hill and.
No, they may not have had enough business. I don't know.
There are a lot of woodlands on a hill, and now there aren't a lot of woodlands on that same hill. And, and all of that happened before anyone got to, to make any judgments about that. I'm, I'm actually interested, was interested, Mr. Bobrowski talked about the original application addressed the requirements in 7.5, and that the March 3rd letter addressed the requirements from 11.6. But I would say that we don't have, as far as I can tell, and I've been looking through this tonight again, as I, as we were here, and I tried earlier, and there's a lot of paper, so I may have missed it. But I don't know that we've had, you know, a definitive set of statements from the applicant under the current plan as it has currently been, as it is currently drafted and so forth, as to the various criteria. I agree with Mr. McGregor in that. I'm not saying they weren't there, but I mean, a lot of things have changed since September of 2020 and March of 2021. In terms of the very plan itself and whether it is meeting all these criteria. So I guess I have these sort of two, and they're kind of combining issues because part of our criteria is, as was noted back in September, is that, you know, the volume of the proposed for the removal does not exceed the minimum practical removal. The plans, you know, are designed to minimize the changes in existing contours. The effect of the removal will not be detrimental and injurious to the abutters or neighbors, either by alteration of topography, a substantial change in the use of streets and neighborhoods. And so, you know, there was a plan submitted, there was, there was back in September, there were assertions in that regard. Those assertions, I think, were effectively rebutted, if you will, by the board and by the town. There's been an entirely new plan. And I'm not sure that we have either sort of an effective statement by the applicant going through those criteria again against exactly the plan and everything that's before us and all of the issues that have happened. And I'm not entirely sure, I think maybe I'm with Elizabeth on this side, that that I am willing to am willing to accept what the applicant says in those regards without without being comfortable that either by way of the town's ability, the town engineering staff and all that's ability to evaluate this and or a third party evaluator that that, you know, I can I can sit here as a member of the board and say those things are true. So I'm I'm really looking, I'm sorry for that long display, but I'm really looking at seven point five point three, and I'm saying I'm not feeling convinced that the data in front of me is adequate to show that all of those standards have been met. And so until I can get convinced, you know, I'm reluctant to vote in favor of that. And I think that requires the applicant to be addressing those, refreshing everything and and addressing those things and and I I'm certainly supportive of if we have to have an independent person. I I think I could be certainly supportive of that.
Jim, I I agree with you. And Theo, to your point, what has been given to us as after the fact? You know, rationale or where they want to end up, I just can't put as much stock in as if nothing had been done yet. And we had five different, you know, choices that we looked at and said, this really isn't the best alternative, but this really is. This is a foregone conclusion that this is they're going to say that this is the best alternative. Now, whether we get to be able to grant a permit one way or another, then I'm I'm not there yet either with the factual data. I'm not I'm not even analyzing seven point five. Sorry, who's someone not muted? Someone is not muted. If you could you mute yourself, that'd be great. Okay, all right, Elizabeth, so you won't.
So I'm just, I'm gonna try and wrap this up and move this along because you've been at this for almost two hours now. And you have quite a quite a few other projects and people waiting. So at this point, I'm gonna definitely recommend that the board continue the public hearing to your meeting in July. But between then and now, I know Attorney Bobrowski has been taking copious notes on what items that he and his team will provide to the board as far as the the legal finding requirements and opinions from Attorney McGregor. But from my standpoint, I will reach out to the Public Works Director and the Water Sewer Superintendent regarding the third party review question and whether they feel that a an additional peer review would provide, you know, the board any you know, additional facts or whether they are in, you know, complete support with you know, Peter Newton's analysis and everything. I I I leave that up to them. They are your professional staff. And I can also work, set up a meeting between Delia, the Director of DPLM, Marcia Rasmussen is also a registered landscape architect. The town engineer and then the applicant's landscape architect and their engineering team to review the landscape plan and you know, address those issues concerns regarding spacing, you know, growth, where additional plants can be planted as far as the engineering side of things and the berm and topography. My initial conversations with at least town staff, the the comment that they don't want leaves in the pond does does not mean very much to anybody. So so we can each we can from a staff level have that more detailed conversation. And then also, more importantly, have the conversation with staff about the other issues and concerns raised about the town's ability to enforce the monitoring well mitigation plan and, you know, how that might even how that might even work. And whether there are conditions that can give the town the ability to to move forward and do that. So that's that's.
Sounds me like a fantastic plan. I will just also note that in in my opinion, I'm this is not to be obstructionist. It's to be moving forward cautiously, understanding that it's a golf course, a butter's bought property along a golf course. It's been a golf course. You need to be able to to maintain the golf course. It's great to have. I understand the benefits that you're speaking of monitoring and everything, but I just really believe moving cautiously forward is going to be the only way, at least I'm and I think other people on the board will feel more comfortable. So Elizabeth, I think those are all great ideas. I don't know if anyone else on the board has anything else to add to that. If not, maybe we say, yes, please, Elizabeth, do that. And let's continue this to seven twenty-five at our next, is it seven twenty-five at our? What is it? July eighth meeting? Any comments from the board or a motion?
May I just ask for a later time that evening? Believe it or not, I am the hearing officer for the Wareham Board of Selectment on marijuana-related permit applications. And I and I have a I have a hearing where I get to sit by myself at the table at five thirty on that evening. I I'm sure I'll be done by seven thirty, so.
That that's fine with me. Do we?
Given what's ahead, given what's ahead of you, Mr. Bobrowski, I think that it's a pretty safe bet that we could set it for seven twenty-five and you'd be fine by seven thirty, but.
Well, that is also an excellent point. Oh, we can whatever. You want to say seven forty-five and we're going to get there.
Let's make seven forty-five and be safe. Thank you.
So so not not knowing how the July eighth agenda will play out. My we're always cautious about putting something out later because we don't know what ahead of it may be continued and then the board sits and waits. I think you can you can place it at seven twenty-five and if Mr. Bobrowski is not there, you can just open and immediately continue till later in the evening until he's able to be there.
I would appreciate.
Let's do that. So we understand we may not be able to start then, but if someone wants to make a motion for seven twenty-five on July eighth.
So moved. Second.
Great, Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Zakers Moore. Hi. Thank you all for your time and we will see you again in July.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, seven ten, Jim Jadao, should do. Don't know how to pronounce that. Hopefully, you're on this call. You can tell me.
It's good evening. It's John Jadoo.
Okay, great. Hello.
Hello.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, we we have an lawsuit that we sometimes make available for an Airbnb and we've been doing that. We have had a permit for the past five years and this is just to renew it. And so, yeah, the it's it's used but used by people, you know, when we make it available, people who want to visit relatives in Concord or other people who want to visit Concord.
Hey, no changes to parking or setup or anything?
No, it's identical. Everything's been identical.
Ray, any complaints?
Complaints? No, I have no word about this project property.
Hey, any comments from the board? All right, let me go ahead and open a public comment. Any public comment? I got nothing. I am going to close public comment. This seems fine to me. Sorry, the last special permit was issued when it was?
Two thousand sixteen, five years.
Five years, so we're thinking another five years. Does that sound?
I would guess so, yes.
Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to issue a special permit on for renewal on the section point three, point fifteen and eleven point six. This is only by law to operate a tourist home or bed and breakfast at five sixty old Marlboro Road, parcel twenty-seven sixty for a period of five years.
So if I if I may ask, normally, your motions also include in statement that to include any all of the previous conditions of approval of the previous permit.
But we're including all the previous conditions of this permit. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Second.
All right, Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Zakers Moore. I thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Bye bye.
Bye. Great, seven fifteen, Blatman Bobrowski and Haverty. Who is here?
Attorney Christopher Alvin for the.
I turned you off earlier. Hold on, sorry. Can you start your video again? There you are. Hi, go ahead.
Hi. For the the applicant, William Sawyer, the property address thirteen sixty-seven Sudbury Road. We're here because the property is a non-conforming structure on a a lot that's undersized and some of the structure does not meet the certain setbacks. Mr. Sawyer and his wife propose a eight hundred and three square foot addition, which is within the setback requirements in a small eighty-four square foot mudroom. And I see that we're getting the plot plan. That's exactly what I wanted to look at right now. As you can see, the existing site plan to the left, there is the addition within the setback requirements of that small mudroom right there in the corner. Yep. And then the proposed addition to the right, which meets all the setback requirements. It's been placed in a location to be as far away as possible from the street and from any abutting neighbors. And because it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, we required a special permit under chapter forty-eight, section six and section seven point one three of your zoning bylaw and the standard is is the addition or the improvements, the alterations a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. We haven't heard anything from any neighbors that that they're in opposition of this. We think that it's designed the way that it's supposed to be designed in order to not to mitigate any damages to any neighbors. The the small mudroom will have a diminished effect being outside the setback requirement and the applicants on this Zoom call, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, go ahead and open up to public comment. Elizabeth, I can't see. Is there anyone out there? I can see. I see no comments. I will go ahead and close public comment. I I don't have any issues with this. I I know that I've been past the site and it seems reasonable. Any other comments from the board?
No, I agree. On a regular basis and and I think it's fine.
Yeah, same same here. I think I think that this is one of those situations where they're not, it's it's not really massively increasing the size of the house or anything else. They're just caught in the fact that they're in a they're in a non-conforming structure and and so every time they make any kind of change, it all have to be before. So here they are. I would make a motion to grant a special permit to Blatman Bobrowski and Haverty LLC under section seven point one point three, eleven point six, the zoning bylaw to construct this eight hundred eighty-seven square foot addition to the non-conforming house and lot of thirteen sixty-seven Sudbury Road finding in doing so that based on the plans as recorded, et cetera, that the the proposal here does not substantially is not substantially more detrimental to the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood and having whatever normal conditions that we would add to such a motion.
I hear a second. Great, Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Zakers Moore. Hi.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Okay, seven twenty, DSK Architects. Ben.
Hello. Hi, is my audio working?
It is.
Okay, wonderful. Ben Herter here from Duane Schmid Kern's Architects in Concord here representing Kerry and Christian Schubert at two forty-one Elm Street. They are looking to expand the habitable space within their home as well as add a two-car garage. Thank you very much. A two-car garage to the property to replace the existing garage that you can see in the plan in front of you. The reason we are here before you tonight is that, one, the property is non-conforming. You can see in this plan here that on the western side of the property, which is to the right, north is facing down, the offset of the existing structure to the side yard setback is fourteen point one feet, where fifteen feet is the minimum required by zoning. If you could pan to the proposed plan, what we are intending to do to expand the habitable spaces, add that square footage to the rear of the property in line with the existing structure. The existing structure is parallel to the western side yard lot line. And so the intent here is to maintain that fourteen point one foot offset from the side yard, not encroach any further towards the side yard lot line. Just maintain that distance. So that's the first reason we're here tonight. The second reason being that because we're in a in a non-conforming situation, we are subject to the fifty percent gross floor area threshold review, which we exceed by roughly eleven percent or two hundred fifty-one square feet. And it's worth noting that the additional square footage to the property that is attached to the house is within that fifty percent. The detached garage that you can see to the bottom edge of the page, if you pan down a little bit, pushes us over that fifty percent threshold. The garage is respecting all of the zoning setbacks in terms of side yard and front yard. So those are the two criteria that we're here to discuss with you tonight. I can walk you through the plans and elevations if that's helpful, though, all of those are in your packets.
Um, you know, could you just put up a photo of the existing?
Sure. Can I share my screen? Is that okay?
Elizabeth, is that? Does that work? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Bear with me here. Okay. So this is the view from Elm Street. Two thirty-three to the left, two fifty-three to the right and the property in question in the middle behind the stand of trees.
Just it was just helpful for me because at first seeing the garage in front, I was curious and then how this is all sighted on its lot, it made a lot more sense to me. So.
Yeah, and I can let me let me zoom in here just for further clarification. So standing in the driveway, once you're on the property here, here's the front elevation of the house. What we're proposing on the front is minimal. We're trying to preserve the character of this home towards Elm Street. So what we're proposing is an infill to the left-hand side of the porch. So what we're proposing is an infill to the left hand side of the porch here for a mudroom space and extending this dormer here to the right to gain some more natural daylight into that bedroom. And then on the right hand side of the house here, this is where we're intending to extend the structure back nine feet, keeping the ridge line, keeping the eve lines of the existing. So it's really just an extrusion of that massing towards the rear of the lot.
Great. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Nope.
All right. Robbie Theo, anything?
Nope.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and open up to public comment. And I should note that we received two letters of support from the both the butters, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, all right, I see no public comment, so I am going to enclose public comment. Again, like I said at first, I was kind of curious about the garage sighting in front of the site, but it seems to make sense to me. It seems to not be detrimental as a whole. And the fact that the butters are in favor of it is compelling to me. Other comments from the board?
Well stated.
Yep.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application of DSK Architects and Planners for a special permit on the section seven one three seven one five and eleven point six of the zoning bylaw to construct a one thousand thirty six square foot addition on a two thousand and seventy four square foot dwelling and demolish an existing two hundred and thirty two square foot detached garage and construct a new six hundred square foot detached garage that is over fifty percent larger than the existing gross floor area and on a nonconforming lot at two forty one Elm Street parcel three nine four five dash four.
Sorry, I should just say, Ray, do you have anything you wanted to add as conditions or you thought that we should?
No, I mean, I reviewed this a couple of times with Ben. Fine.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay. And then making sure the finding that the post is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current situation.
Second.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Chris Moore. I. Thanks very much.
Thank you all.
Have a good night. Great, seven twenty five Sean Lyons. Sean, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, can hear you now.
There is.
Okay, good. How are you? Sean Lyons, forty two Birch Drive in Concord. Let's say two story dwelling. We took down the existing one and we erected, I just lost you. Can you still hear me? Yeah, there we go. We erected this on the same footprint. The house didn't change the footprint at all. It's a two story dwelling. And we want to add a bathroom in another room, preferably a bedroom, a bathroom in another room on the third floor, which would not change the outside of the house or the footprint of the house at all.
Okay, there. That's good. Um, Ray, have reviewing this, did you have any comments or?
No, so the applicant has an initial permit to tear down the existing house, which is a small home. And the house he built was less than the fifty percent. It was, he went right to the max that he could without a special permit. The attic was proposed to be six foot seven ceiling height. And he has decided to finish off some of that attic. So that's why he's in front of the board. Nothing else has changed. And when he's done, I think the total square footage of this house will be twenty three forty two. Correct.
The total square foot, sorry, I just, the total square footage will be twenty three forty two.
Yeah, that's correct.
And and is the and just for my edification, is the attic then ceiling in the attic going to be raised? Is that also the point?
In that six hundred and thirty square foot area that he's proposing.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
It'll go up regularly. Yeah.
That's why he's here because if he doesn't raise that ceiling, it's not considered habitable space in the building code. So he couldn't market it as a bedroom and finished area. If you, some of the builders built, finish it off at six foot seven and it's just storage area.
Right.
The applicant wants to have a bedroom and a bathroom up there. So he needs to raise the ceiling.
Any other comments from the board?
No.
Okay.
Any any neighbor neighborhood letters on this or neighborhood, neighborhood letters or?
I didn't see any.
That's my knowledge.
We'll find out when they have come and opened up here in a second.
Which I will go ahead and do right now. Go ahead and open up to public comment. Well, there's your answer. Go ahead and close public comment. Again, this seems completely reasonable to me. And I'm glad the applicant came and asked for it instead of just doing it. So.
We wouldn't have allowed that, Elizabeth.
No, 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 no. No one would ever do that. Any other comments or? And Ray, any conditions? And it's a, to me, it's a modest increase and and the house is is a reasonable size. It doesn't seem like an overreach in any way to me. So I will go ahead and accept a motion if someone has one.
I make I make a motion to approve the application by Sean Lyons for a special permit on the section seven one three seven one five and eleven point six of the zoning bylaw to convert six hundred and thirty square foot of attic space to living space on a one thousand seven hundred and twelve square foot house that is over fifty percent larger than the existing gross floor area, including expansions within a consecutive five year period on a nonconforming house and lot at forty two Bird Street parcel zero nine three three. It's a finding that the proposed is not more detrimental to the neighborhood as the the existing. And.
One second, that. I think I'll, I think it actually, I mean, I would just make a comment quickly that it really fits into the character of this neighborhood, which I know pretty well. So it's really no issue.
Okay, great. Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Chris Moore. I. Thank you very much. Okay, seven thirty Neshoba Homes Development.
Thank you.
Presenting. Oh, thanks. Have a good night.
Yep.
Neshoba Homes.
James Casella from the Shova Homes Development. Starting three oh six Losbrook Road. Proposing to demolish the existing nineteen fifties ranch, which is about one thousand and forty two square feet and proposing to build a new colonial four thousand two hundred and ninety square feet with a two car attached garage. The lot has nonconforming frontage. One twenty five is required in a residence B district. This lot has one hundred feet of frontage. The lot does, the lot area is conforming. It's over twenty thousand square feet in area. And the proposed building will be within all the required setbacks. And the height of the house would also be within the required zoning requirements. I'm also going to locate the house further back from the.
You know, they have the mute button. When you press on it, then the line goes.
Oops. Excuse me?
It's okay. Keep going.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, the proposed house will be about twelve feet further back from the existing house and about five or six feet further from the right lot line. There isn't many nonconforming lots on Losbrook Road. There's thirty five residents B lots that are conforming lots. Only six are nonconforming, including one of my neighbors to the left of this lot. Also, the subdivision behind this property, which is Wright Road, there's thirty house lots there and those are also all conforming lots. And in recent years, three houses in that subdivision were demolished and new houses were built. And the house I'm proposing to construct is similar in size and and design to those three houses that were built on Wright Road. Also, personally, I even I've built two houses in the area recent years. One of them would be three seventy seven Losbrook Road. And the other one is sixty two Sorrel Road. And again, this will be similar to to those houses. Also, just a footnote here, the average gross floor area of those recently five homes is four thousand five hundred and three square feet. And I got that information from the assessors online website. And you might, I'm sure you have a packet of that that I sent to you. You can review that. This house again is four thousand two hundred and ninety square feet. So it's it's a little bit less than the average of the five houses that that were recently built. And yet, any questions on that?
Yeah, there any any questions from the board? Um. Let me, let me, I was, let me open up to public comment. I will go ahead and open it up. I see Pamela, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Pamela Dritt, thirteen Concord Green, unit four. I was wondering, Mr. Casella, were you planning, how how were you planning to heat and cool it? Would you be using heat pumps? Would it be solar ready?
Um, so you can address your questions to us and then I will give the.
Find out about, will it, will it be a natural gas hookup? Or all electric?
Um, yeah, Mr. Castle, you can go ahead and answer that.
Sure, I'd be happy to. There's natural gas in the street which supplies the existing house. So we're going to utilize the natural gas to heat the house and also for hot water. As far as heat pumps, I haven't quite decided yet which way to go. Heat pumps have been been very popular in recent years. So I may explore that. Typically, my house is a forced hot air with gas.
Could you please, I encourage you to please consider the all electric heat pump instead of the natural gas because that's where we're trying to go as a town and as a world for climate change. And you have a great deal of power, sir. You can really help. And it would be cheaper in the long run and make your your houses more appealing, especially to environmentally aware buyers.
Thank you.
Sorry, Cynthia. There you go, Cynthia. You're you're unmuted.
Great. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, Cynthia Katz, twenty Conan Street. Am I good to go?
Yeah, you're good to go.
Great. Um, I I hope you will deny this special permit. A number of years ago, the planning board brought before the town meeting the zoning bylaw of increasing the FAR as well as the plus fifty percent that this is asking for. So this is a thousand, a thousand and forty two square foot house. And the applicant is wanting to go to four thousand, approximately four thousand three hundred square feet, well above the fifty percent threshold. This is the exact kind of development that Concord is struggling with as it tries to maintain a diversity of housing stock so that we don't have just a high end and affordable housing. And as we continue to lose the middle, we lose the possibility that a range of people can afford to buy in Concord. We have a town meeting coming up. We have issues that that touch on this. And as I said, the citizens of Concord voted these bylaws because they don't want this kind of radical shift in housing size in one kind of a permit. So I hope that you will vote no on this. It's very, it's this is a very large house. I'm very familiar with this. It's around the corner from where I live. And it is, it will radically change the Losbrook Road neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks. Patrick.
Hi, Patrick Carey, two ninety eight Losbrook Road. We are the direct abutter just down the hill from this property. I I think I would share the previous speaker's concerns that the the plan as specified does seem a bit disproportionately large relative to the lot size and the other, the other houses in in the neighborhood. I I wouldn't go so far as as to say that I specifically recommend voting against it, but I I do think some scrutiny is required before approving the the request for the the variance. However, the the main thing I want to inquire about is it's difficult to tell from the from the drawings that were submitted. So if you if you look at the 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 plans for the sewerage, you actually get a good view of the elevation change from from one end of the lot to the other. So there's about from the back right corner, which sort of abuts the the back left corner of our lot. I state that I think it's ninety eight feet above sea level up to the the budding house on the other side. It's about a hundred and eighteen feet. So it's about a twenty foot difference almost from left to right. The elevations make it look like the house is essentially on a flat plane. And I I want to understand whether there are any plans to do any significant regrading of the property, specifically any building up of berms or anything that would would dramatically shift the the general natural slope that exists on the property today.
Mr. Castle.
Yeah, I'll be happy to answer that. Looking at the septic plan here, there's very little change in grade. You can follow the contour lines here at the edge of the septic system, which is one oh two. And if you look at all the other contour lines in the area, there's really hardly any change to the contours. And what what helps the situation is the septic system is in the ground. It's not a mound system. So we can maintain the same elevations on the lot. Also, the lot, the grades around the house, again, they're not going to change very much if if at all. And you can see that on the plan here. We had the septic system designed recently by the engineers and we were able to fit the leaching field in the house in there relatively easy. So we're really not going to have much change in the contours. Also, we're going to improve the lot by adding storm drainage chambers. The house will have gutters and downspouts, which will lead to the storm chambers. And again, it's all sand and gravel out there. So it's perfect conditions for infiltration. And that will help contain all the runoff from the from the roof. I'm not sure if my neighbor to the right, Mr. Kerry, has has had issues in the past or not. But we'll be containing the runoff with these storm drainage chambers, which are highly successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Open it up to the board. Comments from the board.
Yes, I was just looking at some of the plans and so, but Jim.
Well, go ahead there. I just.
Okay, so, you know, I think this is, I guess I would just say as a general matter and, and in response perhaps to some of the public comment that this is a very. You know, this is always a little bit of a difficult situation for the board because as the applicant has pointed out here, there are such a huge percentage of lots in this area that are conforming. And as a consequence, that means really that, that one can imagine that without any action whatsoever from anybody of the town of Concord, that houses of this size or even bigger. I think the FAR here was like 6,000 square feet or something could be built on these areas.
Oh, can Elizabeth, I'm sorry, can Elizabeth bring up that map? Show us the zoning map to, to your point, to just show what's conforming in the area while you're discussing.
Excuse me, would you have the, that I sent you that shows the key of which houses are conforming and which are not?
That one is, I think it is right here. This is it.
Okay, yeah, the color code kind of.
Yeah, the color code does it. So, so 20306 and 3 whatever 16 are non-conforming. There's a couple of more around it. But, you know, the, the simple fact is, is that, I mean, what is a difficult task for a board without further town action, you know, to indicate changes in the zoning laws or other things? Is that when you look at a map like this and you know that there are in fact bigger houses scattered here and there throughout this area? And you can imagine that smaller houses will become bigger houses completely by right. It is, you know, it's extraordinarily difficult, I think, in this, in this situation to, to, to try to maintain a, a character of a neighborhood in a small, you know, do this to try to maintain a character of a neighborhood. So that's always a dilemma. This is probably, you know, this is probably large compared to perhaps what we would like to see there. But it is also not out of character where other homes are in that area. And I, I don't, and I think that from a standpoint of a governing of a, of a board that has to try to apply with consistency and, you know, with consistency, the, the zoning bylaw in front of us, I think it's extremely difficult for us to, to turn down this particular housing project. I mean, on top of everything else, it's really completely conforming except for the, the 100-foot frontage. So you really, you have a fairly large lot, not inconsistent. I'm very sympathetic to the, the fact that you want to have mixed housing. But I don't think that we in this board have the power or the legislation to be able to, to deny this and have that stand up, you know, really in any kind of scrutiny further on. So, I mean, what I would say is that this is, it's a rather compact design. I think that it's sort of thoughtful in terms of a lot of things it's done. I think it fits well within the, the area. I, I recognize it's a little bigger than some of the houses around it, but it's ultimately not out of, out of character in my judgment of the whole neighborhood.
Well said, Jim.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was, that was well said, Jim. I, I think you, you expressed the difficulty that, that we have with, with these larger replacement homes. Very well. And as you said, you know, you mentioned it was basically done and all. And that as an architectural style, it'll fit in the neighborhood. But then I also want to add to that, that I appreciate the fact that some of the, some of the rainwater is being infiltrated, that the applicant is making use of the good soils that, that he has. And that, that's, that's an important thing to me as well.
Thanks. I, I completely agree with Jim. And I would also say, because we hear it a lot, that absolutely we understand this, this discussion in town around smaller houses and non-mansionization and the FAR. We are, we absolutely understand all that. Unfortunately, it does not, in this situation, give us the legally defensible right to just come in a situation like this and tell someone to build a bigger, a smaller house because we want them to build a smaller house. So I don't want people to think we're not sympathetic. We are when we can do something that we think is right. We, I mean, we always do what we think is right. So I think, Elizabeth, do you have, do you have anything to add to this? Ray, Elizabeth, anything?
No, the only thing I will add is just a suggestion for Mr. Casella is the, the whole discussion in town regarding, you know, sustainability and fossil-free buildings is something that every, almost every board and committee in town is grappling with. And one piece of information that the planning board was recently given by the, from the Sustainability Director was a cost analysis between, for an all-electric development. And that is on the Planning Board's Goals and Projects webpage that you can, you know, look at and see that it, there is a cost effectiveness on top of the environmental and sustainability for going fossil-free. So I just wanted to put that out there. That's just a recent document that was posted to the Planning Board webpage.
Thank you.
Ray, any comments on this?
No, I mean, the only, the only reason he's here is because of the lack of frontage and requires a special permit, so.
All right, any other comments from the board? You want to, Theo, motion?
Here, I'll make the motion to approve the application of Nishoba Homes Development LLC for a special permit on the sections 713, 715, and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to demolish the existing 1,042 square foot dwelling and construct a new 4,290 square foot dwelling that is over 50% larger than the existing gross floor area on a non-conforming lot at 306 Laws Brook Road, parcel 28, 2080. Findings that the, the proposed home is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I, if anybody else add to that?
Jim, you have anything to add?
Sorry, I was unmuted. Yeah, no, I mean, I think that the standard is basically refers to, you know, impacts on traffic flow and natural environment, et cetera. I think that, you know, in, in, in all those cases, the standards of 11.6, I think we looked at all of those issues. In particular, we talked about the natural environment with respect to the rain runoff. There was questions answered with respect to the drainage. So I think that the key issue is the impact on the character of the neighborhood, which I agree with the find, the finding of the board that it, you know, does not materially, detrimentally impact the character of the neighborhood.
Great, so that's a second.
It is.
Great. Your kinderman's.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Ms. Akers-Moore. Hi. Thank you.
I have to, I will, I'll just throw in an addition and second what Elizabeth said to the builder here. My adult children are looking for homes. And, and I can say that in that, you know, and they'd be, no, they're not looking in Concord or, or even in Massachusetts. So they're not a prospect necessarily, but just they're members of a class of folks who are looking for homes these kinds of size. And it does matter to them a lot that, that, that the home has, you know, is, is trying to be as free of fossil fuels as possible. So just, just note it for the record.
Yeah, and if I can add to that, if I can add to that, we, we remodeled our home about two years or so ago. And we had natural gas and we removed natural gas. And we're all electric with heat pumps. And it's, it's surprising how affordable it is and how, how well it, well it heats our home and cools our home. So I, I would encourage you to, to look at the, the document that Elizabeth mentioned and, and, and give that a really good thought.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Great, we're down to our administrative business minutes, April 8th, May 20. I submitted comments, I saw the revisions, I saw other people submitting comments, saw their revisions. They are fine with me. Any other comments?
Remove approval.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Hi. Hi.
Ms. Akers-Moore. Well, Tom, it's too late.
When do we, when do we get to go inside again?
I'm still here. I was gonna say, no, you're stuck. We should have come to this before you got sworn in. Yeah, when, when does the, we have one more meeting or the meeting still?
So currently, we're not sure if the legislature did extend at least that provision of the emergency orders regarding being able to have virtual meetings. The, it's not, it's, so it's not a question of the state of emergency ends June 15th. Unless the legislature extends that provision, you will go back into in-person meetings in, on June 8th. I mean, your July 8th meeting. The question of whether, if it does get extended and you go, you continue to be virtual is how the town, from the town manager and the select board want to. There has definitely been a increase in public participation by being able to offer virtual attendance. And so the town IT director and facilities is looking at the potential to be able to have in-person meetings, but also offer some level of virtual participation. And that's just currently being discussed. So at this point, I would say your July 8th meeting will likely be in person. But whether there's going to be a virtual component to that, we don't know yet.
Okay, well, we will.
Is Mr., is Mr. Johnson have anything further to add from the point of view of the select board?
No, not, not much tonight. I mean, we have, of course, a couple of things that the planning board has in front of the town meeting that could affect the future deliberations of the ZBA. But not, not much else. So I think it's a pretty quiet town meeting overall, I suspect.
And I meant on the indoor issue too.
Well, yeah, I think that our approach has been to say that committees could do what they choose to, to do between now and September 1st. But I think that as a liaison, I've been finding that most committees have erred on the side of meeting remotely, realizing that not everyone is vaccinated at this point. And that, you know, that there's likely extension here till September 1st. And that at September 1st, hopefully move back to an in-person model. But, you know, you, you really actually do have some discretion here to, to meet in person if you choose to.
Well, we, we can, we continue the meeting tonight. Should we have noted, mentioned, that you are going to be in back in person?
No, there's no, there's no need for that because.
There's no obligation, I think.
Part of the posted agenda.
Right.
Whether it is virtual or in public.
Okay.
The other, the other item, such as, you know, the planning board is putting under consideration that if virtual meetings are permitted till, you know, out to September 1st, or, or they may pass legislation that allows that discretion and continue that beyond. It somewhat, also what planners are talking about is when you have an agenda where you know there is a very high level of interest, having an in-person meeting in a space that facilitates the ability to have, you know, a high-level interest becomes challenging. And sometimes having a virtual meeting actually becomes easier to manage. And everybody gets the opportunity to be heard and, and speak in, in a, in a less, sometimes contentious or, you know, public speaking in front of everybody is very difficult for a lot of people and it becomes a challenge. So that's one of the other considerations that, you know, at least in the planner world being discussed.
There's also one other transient concern, which should go away pretty soon and probably wouldn't affect the ZBA, which is that there's limited meeting rooms now with the townhouse being under, under construction. But I think, you know, the planning department, I think you've got a space that might be more earmarked. So you could probably solve that problem.
Do we have any kind of, I've just, I, I'm sorry to belabor this. I'll just ask quickly and then let it go. Do we ever have any concerns? Have we, have we heard anything in this whole pandemic about people who, you know, don't have access? I mean, I, I guess you, you sort of need a phone or a computer here, but I, and so I, and it's conquered. So maybe it's, maybe it's not an issue. But I just, I've often wondered if there was anybody who was excluded by virtue of the fact that there was, it was.
I've not been aware of any comments that we've had in Concord on that.
I'm sorry to belabor the meeting any further. I'm happy to move to adjourn.
Yeah. All right. Move to adjourn second. I mean, we always just break the quorum.
That's right.
All right. Thanks, Tom. It's nice having you here and look forward to having you deliberate with us.
Well, it seems to be on this side of the table.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, when I was on the planning board of the 1980s, Tom was a, a rather frequent guest.
Yes, and I remember you well. No, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks so much, everyone. I'll see you in July.
Thanks.
Thank you. Take care.
Good night, everybody.